Good afternoon, everyone. It's 5:00 PM. I realized I didn't do a two-minute warning, so I'm just going to jump in here. So today is a work session on enrollment because that's been a topic of interest for many of us. And given the curiosity and the conversations we've had, we felt it was important to frame the conversation as we close out this year. So with that, I'm going to call to order the December 8, 2020 work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board. And today, our topic will be MCCCD enrollment. For the record, so people know who's in attendance of board members, I'm going to call your name, recognizing that a quorum is not necessary for work sessions. But with that, I understand Ms. Munoz is not with us this afternoon, and I know Mr. Hendricks is not. So I'm going to call other board members. Mrs. McGrath, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Perfect. Dr. Narini.
I'm here.
Good afternoon. Mr. Sarr.
Me too.
Wonderful. Dr. Thor.
I'm here.
Great. Ms. Nguyen, I do not see her on the attendance list. Ms. Nguyen?
I know they're trying to assist her to get in to a meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, then we'll just go forward. And when she's on, just note the record as you have it. And with my attendance, so just again, for the note, right now, there are five board members in attendance with one who will be joining us shortly. So with that, moving forward, we're going to also, the team that put this enrollment work session together wanted to start with identifying a song. So you came up with quite a list, team enrollment. And there are two that stood out for me, and my favorite you had on the list. And that was very appropriate to enrollment and thinking ahead of why people choose to go to school and earn a trade, learn a trade, and find employment, and do all those great things that we stand for. And with that, I chose "My Shot" from the Hamilton musical. Do you have another comment, Dr. Fisher, before I turn this over to Dr. Gonzalez on your team's interest in a song that exemplifies today?
We had a lot of fun, Ms. Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez and CEC members. We had a lot of fun batting back and forth many, many songs. As you saw, we sent you a list, including some rap songs, some musicals as far back as the '20s. So thank you for the opportunity to do that. And may I take a moment just to say thank you to the entire team that put this together. As we've said before, when we've presented enrollment and other topics, it takes a village, and there was certainly a very large village involved today. So thank you.
You're welcome. Well, with that, with the song "My Shot" going through my head, and maybe "Can't Stop Believing" by Journey going through others, and some of the other songs you recommended with that, Dr. Gonzalez, it's your turn. I'm turning this over to you.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC and guests. We thank you again for this opportunity to come before you this evening for a discussion on enrollment. This has certainly been top of mind since, well, it's always top of mind for us, but especially as the pandemic has impacted enrollment. We are in the process of gathering data from our sister colleges around the state. And preliminary data shows that what we're experiencing is very similar to what other colleges are experiencing around the state. And I came across an article, I believe it was Friday or over the weekend. And, you know, I'm sure you've heard this, and I'm sure others on the call have heard this, but, you know, related to this pandemic, I've heard many people say with COVID and reacting to the pandemic, we're all in the same boat. And the article that I read was inside Higher Education, and it said, "We are all in the same storm, but we're not all necessarily in the same boat, particularly when it comes to our students. Some of us are in super yachts, and some of us just have one oar." And in sharing this with somebody, they went on to say, "Well, some are in a canoe, some are on a raft, and some are actually treading in water." And I think that during this pandemic, it has exacerbated that notion that there are certainly some differences in our students' ability to have access to education under normal circumstances. But the pandemic has certainly affected that. And we see that happening across our state, and we see that happening across the country. The team, I'm forewarning you and those on the call that this is a long presentation, but it's packed with good information. And we hope that we can quickly get to a place of discussion. There are some questions that we have of you as a board, where we seek some guidance and feedback on our work. I too want to thank the team, all of the colleges, the college presidents, faculty, the rest of the administration, and all of those on the front line who are working tirelessly every day to bring in more and more students, and more importantly, to keep them when we get them. I just want to say thank you for all that you guys are doing. I appreciate it very much. So with that said, President Sullivan, thank you for the opportunity to introduce this. I will turn it over to Provost Fisher.
Okay. And Dr. Fisher, before you start, I just wanted the board to recognize that we will have opportunity for questions and discussion after you present the material. So with that.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
This is Mrs. Nguyen. I was upgraded to a panelist, and I just want to acknowledge I've been here the whole time, but am now a panelist again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been noted for the record. Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Fisher.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC and guests. We are pleased to come before you once again to talk about enrollment. As the chancellor said, it's very top of mind for all of us. A lot of work is going into mitigation of enrollment. And so what we're going to do, next slide, please. What we're going to do today is give you an update on enrollment data looking into spring, and a little bit of analysis of that data, tell you where we are and what we think is happening with our students. We're going to talk about the actions that we're taking for spring 2021 enrollment. And that includes both systemic actions, but also enrollment at the colleges. And so I'll be joined today by Dr. Paul Dale and his team from Paradise Valley Community College, Chris Haynes, interim president at Scottsdale Community College, and her team, and president of Phoenix College, Dr. Larry Johnson and his team, to talk about some innovative things that the colleges are doing to help spur spring enrollment, and look forward to having you discuss some of those as we get into board discussion later in the presentation. There is a lot of data. And so, as the chancellor said, we're going to move quickly through this. I'm happy to answer any questions as we get to it. But no, you can always get ahold of us later and talk about it as well. So with that, next slide. And the next. As we've shown you before, the national community college enrollments are in decline. We know that about, that community colleges nationally are currently down about 9.5%. However, we know that colleges are also, individual colleges are reporting declines of up to 30%. We know that our part-time students are declining even more. And for Maricopa, that's particularly challenging, as we'll see as we move into our local data. The steepest decline is in our first-time community college students, those that are coming first time to college, often are first-generation students as well. Some of the smaller rural institutions nationwide are seeing some increases. But of course, our largest impacts are among our underserved populations, the black communities, our Hispanic communities. And unfortunately, our male students that have been in decline for some time continue to see that impacted by this pandemic. Next slide. We added some data from, recent data from the Community College Research Center, CCRC. They did a big research study on how COVID has changed students' plans for community college. We see that community college students are canceling plans to attend at twice the rate of our four-year students across the nation. Next slide. We also see that over 33% of households with current or prospective community college students are citing COVID, contracting it, being concerned about it as a reason that they are not coming to college. And that compares a 10% hike compared to our four-year college students across the nation. Next slide. And then who and how many are canceling community college plans? And almost 40% of community college students cited that a job loss since March 2020 has been a huge reason that they're canceling their plans. And as we'll talk about later in our local data, it isn't always the cost of college, it's the cost of life that keeps our students from continuing with us and succeeding. Next slide. These are the data that you see regularly, board members, in your weekly snapshot. As we head into our spring enrollment, this is seven weeks out, so week minus seven. You can see where our head count and our basic term FTSE are. These are two ways of measuring. Next slide. But another is attempted credit hours. And so you see that we're down comparatively less in credit hours. And attempted credit hours are those that students are enrolled in now. You often hear us refer to earned credit hours. Those are more a summative assessment after a semester has ended. But we look at the attempted credit hours going in because, of course, credit hours are what generate the revenue. Next slide. So currently, we know that our head count is down 15.5 from spring. Our FTSE is down 16.6. Credit hours, as I just mentioned, are down less than our head count, and that's a good thing in terms of revenue. Of course, it's not a great thing because we want as many students as we can get in our doors because they can't be successful if they don't come. So we are closing the enrollment gap as we head into the spring semester at week minus 15, so 15 weeks out from the start of classes. We were down 23.8%. And it is through Herculean efforts at the colleges and with district office that we've closed that gap so far to 15.5%. And of course, are continuing to push hard to close it even further. As a leading indicator and a positive one, we've had 11,170 FAFSA applications since October 1st. And that's actually up 3% year-over-year. And I call that a leading indicator because students that complete FAFSA are indicating to us that they want to come to college, and they're seeking the resources to do so. And right now, of course, we have about 80% of our active courses are being delivered in a variety of modalities that are not in person. And that includes online, hybrid, live online, or hybrid virtual formats. Next slide. The largest decline in our age group, as we mentioned nationally, is our younger students. So 18- to 24-year-olds, that's 23.71% down. That's significant. And it's particularly significant because 18- to 24-year-olds make up 52% of our enrollment. And so a decline in our largest segment is a real challenge for us. Next slide. Other direction. Nguyen back. Thank you. Students of color, as we mentioned nationally, are declining. They're declining here at Maricopa as well. Down about 18.4% compared to our white students at 11.3. Students of color make up 45% of our enrollments, with Hispanics comprising the minority majority by a very large margin, being that they are 36% of our students of color, whereas our black students are 7%, and American Indian are 2%. So two big chunks of our population are being significantly impacted by the pandemic and its fallout for our students. Next slide. New to Maricopa students have declined the greatest. Again, those are often those younger students, 18- to 24. Our continuing students are impacted as well, so they're down about 16%. We mentioned that male students decline more than female. And dual enrollment has continued to grow year-over-year to fiscal year 19 last year. And we've seen significant and steady growth in that population. We don't know where we're going to end up this year. We expect there to be some impact, but we see that as a strong opportunity market for us for enrollment. Next slide. In the good news, our marketing leads were up by about 128% year-over-year, even though we are down 29% in new students for spring. So currently, we have more than 7,000 students in the pipeline who could enroll in spring but haven't yet. And we'll be talking about some of the things that we're doing to incent them to join us. A little over 5,200 of these have no previous enrollment at all or are new to MCCD. So they could help us make up that gap of the new-to student, or new-to-college students that we just saw. We've done some text surveying of our students. Next slide. So what we know, our students, we sent students who could have enrolled, could have enrolled with us but did not, chose not to. And that was a little over 3,200 responses with a very strong confidence and margin of error. And we also surveyed students who did enroll and asked them some different questions about what got them to school. Again, that was a little over 1,000 students responding with a good confidence rating. Next slide. So those who could have enrolled but did not, they gave us their top barriers to enrolling. Mostly, they didn't feel prepared to take classes online. They preferred to wait until we returned in person. They also had some challenges with just basic communication, unaware of our campus reopening plans, unaware of how classes would be offered at the college of their choice. Next slide. However, for students who did enroll, the reasons that they chose out of a multiple-choice question-answer kind of format were these in order, we offer online classes, so some students are attracted to that. We scheduled enough online courses so they could get what they needed. They had consistent place to live. Their environment was safe. They had enough food to eat. And this is where we get into the cost of life, not just the cost of college. Interestingly enough, one of the selections was Maricopa Opportunity Grants. And these students that did receive the grants were aware that that helped them pay for college. So we were going to see that top of mind. So that's sort of our data that we wanted to share with you for spring before we leap into the actions that we've taken. We've been before you, I believe this is the third time this year, with enrollment data. So the narrative hasn't changed. The, what we're seeing nationally is what we're seeing at Maricopa, which is we're all trying to crawl back from a fall that was impacted dramatically by pandemic. And we're seeing that across the board. As you can see from those data slides, again, I'd be happy to answer more detailed questions if you have them later in the presentation or afterwards. So as we go into what actions are we taking for spring, next slide. We're going to talk a bit about our systemic actions. Again, those partnerships between colleges and the district office to make big systemic change to drive more students in a collective action methodology. We're also going to talk about our enrollment cancellation and the change that we made specifically for spring semester, so you're aware of that. And then we'll do our college spotlights. The next four slides are really indicative of the way colleges and the district office are partnering. These speak to some changes in business process. They speak to a creative approach to the different things that we have been traditionally doing and some new things that we're doing to really drive spring enrollment. This is talking about our contact center. We have, just leading into spring, reached out to more than 21,000 spring students to provide support to the enrollment throughout the admissions process. And if you look at the top box, you can see how many students are in each of the stages of enrollment. So of the students that we reached out to, 29, 67 were applicants. A little over 1,000 were admitted. 7,600-plus were in matriculate. And then others were in different spaces within that. And each and every one of them got a personal contact to help them make their way through each of those stages so that we can get them enrolled. On top of that work, working with the colleges, we're doing three specific spring campaigns. So we're speaking to the students that were awarded financial aid but have not enrolled. We're talking to those that were matriculated for Fall 2020 that aren't with us yet. And we're also going to be speaking to those that are what we call enrollment recovery. So after we do the Enrollment Correction E.C., which we'll talk about in just a minute, those students that we, that have been dropped for nonpayment, trying to get them back. Typically, that runs about 5,000 students. But with the great efforts that are happening with the colleges and the district office to reach out to the students, we're hoping to mitigate that and make our enrollment cancellation much smaller this semester. Next slide. Without going into great detail, we're also doing some systemic actions with targeted campaigns through text and email. We've created some new tools, like the one you see to the right, a student self-serve course selection guide, particularly for students that are continuing on that need, don't necessarily need to speak to an advisor, they just need some assistance getting to their selections and moving quickly. That's really built in response to the survey data that we've gotten from students over the last several months that we know that we need to produce more of these tools. In the weekly snapshots, we've also been providing you with some of the videos that we're producing. And those are all over all the college websites and the district website, helping students do everything from work their way through the process of enrolling, really giving them step-by-step instructions on how to get through that, to what are FOIs, to you name it. We've got videos to help students connect quickly with the information that they need. Next slide. In financial aid, I don't want to go through all of this, but I want to point out that we've made tremendous strides through the Transformation Project in financial aid. We're doing, for the very first time, estimated letters are going out. Estimated award letters are going out to colleges well early so that we are top of mind with dollar amount in hand with students when it comes to Decision Day in May. That's a tremendous stride forward. And though it seems simple, why didn't you just send the letters earlier? There's a lot of backend processing that has to happen before we can do an estimated award. And so through the transformation process, we've been able to speed that up. And we hope that that will really help us capture more of those students as they're making their decisions for Fall. Enrollment Cancel, next slide. You're probably familiar with our enrollment concierge services. This is a partnership between MCOR, who really does the recruiting of the companies and that kind of service, and our enrollment management and student services areas that provide the backend to help the students through the processes that they need to go to college. So we're seeing increases in this. We're seeing as well the nursing upskilling that was initially funded through the governor's office. We were able to bring in 108 RNs to do upskilled classes. And we're hoping to continue to span those kinds of upskills into different kinds of career pathways. We're also working now with WEOWA, and big kudos to the Workforce Office for the work that they've done to get us there so that we can begin to get students through AZWorks into our institutions. Next slide. So as we've worked through putting in place these different approaches, as we've looked at our data, we know that we have some other spring opportunities that we're going to jump on right away that you didn't see listed previously. We know that attempted credit hours are down. So they're down 13.1% compared to head count. So students are taking marginally more credit hours. However, they are not doing the 15 to finish that we'd like them to do, so we want to communicate with them. And we've got about 2,300 students that are prime candidates for an increased academic load in spring that will be contacting directly and working with them to help them get the schedule that they need to move forward. Next slide. So I had mentioned earlier that we do an enrollment cancellation. Enrollment cancellation is where a student is dropped for nonpayment at their classes. We do a lot of communicating with students leading up to that date. Typically, we would do an enrollment cancellation before the holiday break, and then again after. This year, in response to just our changed environment, the vice presidents of Student Affairs and Academic Affairs and Admin Services worked together and came forward with some recommendations to the chancellor's cabinet. And it was decided that we would move our enrollment cancellation to January 6th. We will run it once. And this will allow a lot more time for those that have financial aid paperwork in process to get that completed, allowing more time for us to communicate with students and get them signed up for payment plans, and just a lot of more proactive communication with our students between now and January 6th. We've been refining communications plans for contacting students who are enrolled but do not have a form of payment on the books. So weekly text messages, emails, call campaigns. And then after January 6th recovery, the enrollment recovery is when we work with those students who were dropped for nonpayment. And again, we hope to reduce that number dramatically this year by moving the date out and by proactively communicating. Next slide. And now I am absolutely delighted to, unfortunately, our logo isn't showing up, but to invite Chris Haynes, interim president, and her team, I believe Dr. Stephanie Fuji is with her, to speak. And then after that, we will be hearing from Dr. Paul Dale and his team at Paradise Valley, and Dr. Larry Johnson at Phoenix College. So, President Haynes, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher. President Sullivan, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, and colleagues. It's my pleasure to bring you greetings from Scottsdale Community College, home of the Fighting Artichokes. And also my academic, vice president of academic affairs, Dr. Stephanie Fuji will be joining me, as Dr. Fisher said, on this presentation. We have one slide. And basically, what we're talking really about is our success in our eight-week courses this last fall. So just some context here. In 2018, when I came onboard in August, we started talking a lot about enrollment decline. What are we doing? What are we doing? And so my vice president group and I sat and talked a lot about, what about eight-week courses? What can we do to make Scottsdale stand out amongst the other colleges and help students move through their progression to an AA or a certificate in a different way, and hopefully, a quicker way? So as many of you know, an eight-week class is anywhere between seven and nine credits. Sometimes it's four or five weeks, or, I'm sorry, seven to nine weeks. This last summer, we had some five- and four-week classes during that time. And we had some really good success with that. So we did, so eight-week classes is what we kind of landed on. They're most common. And then the other thing is why offer short-week, excuse me, offer short-week classes? Research shows that it increases student success and retention. And that that research is out there. And we'd be happy to get to you more information if you'd like. Students like the flexibility. If they can't come in the first eight weeks, they're able to jump into the second eight weeks and still take their classes and still move forward in their completion goals. And then also, when life happens to students, if I'm taking two eight-week classes in the first session, and my car breaks down in the sixth week, and I've been coming back and forth to take those classes to Scottsdale to home, I know if I can just get through these next two weeks, I can finish both of those classes. But if I'm in a 16-week class, I might just drop both those classes because I don't think I can make it with my car broke, that's broken down, and all those other pieces of things that are happening in my life. So it helps students a little bit more. And then what did Scottsdale do? We started off with about 13% of our Fall classes, as you can see, in eight, seven, between seven and nine weeks. And we moved that up to 40% this last fall. Now, again, as I tell my crew, don't waste a good crisis. And that's what we, the pandemic for us was something that we felt like we could do this and do it well. So I'm going to let Dr. Fuji kind of walk you through the rest of it. I want to just say a big shout out and thank you to our faculty, thank you to our scheduling committee, and Dr. Fuji and her group, and this is not something that everybody loved right off the bat, and I can't say that everybody wants to do this full-time all the time. But I think it's a great option for our students, and I think our faculty know that as well. So, Dr. Fuji, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Haynes. President Sullivan, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC, and guests. President Haynes shared with you a little bit about what we did and why we did that. What we want to share is a little bit about how we did that. It is important to share that this did not happen overnight. Scottsdale has been struggling with declining enrollment for a number of years, and so we had already begun exploration of how to diversify our offerings, but when President Haynes came, she really began strongly advocating for increasing short-term, particularly eight-week courses. So we began by really trying to work collaboratively, by engaging different areas of the college in conversation, collecting and sharing research and data, and we were actually planning for a college-wide discussion to take place in April of 2019. Part of our conversation with our faculty and staff happened through our president's cabinet, through our strategic planning and allocating resource council, our strategic scheduling committee, which this is a very important group for us, that's a cross-college scheduling committee, made up of faculty senate chairs, occupational program directors, and staff that are intimately involved in the scheduling process, as well as talking with our division chairs. So we were planning for engaging in a college-wide conversation in April, and then the pandemic hit. And so that kind of put everything on hold, I think, as many of our sister colleges and us as well. Everybody, it was the rush of activity to transition and support faculty and students as we moved to remote instruction. However, when we started thinking about what was, what did we want fall 2020 to look like, we went back to our strategic scheduling committee to seek their help and guidance. That committee advocated that we begin the implementation of eight weeks sooner than we had originally planned, and this was because of the reality of COVID. That group drafted recommendations for fall 2020 scheduling parameters for the college. We shared those parameters with our division chairs and faculty senate, and both groups supported. Included in those parameters was the request that those classes that could be transitioned to eight weeks considered doing so, and that any courses requiring a face-to-face or hybrid component do so for only the first eight weeks of the schedule, and this was because we were concerned that there would be a surge of COVID in the fall or during the fall semester, kind of what we're seeing now. I can't stress enough the importance of trusting in our faculty, and when we saw their efforts to transition the fall 2020 schedule, to how they were working to be more inclusive and increasing the short-term eight-week offerings as well as the online, it became a priority for the college to invest in faculty development and training to support their efforts. Now, SEC has been doing considerable work in online faculty development for the past two years as a result of recommendations that we received from HLC in 2017, and then in anticipation for fall of 2020, to help and support the faculty who were wishing to transition their courses. Our Center for Teaching and Learning designed and facilitated an intensive boot camp, which addressed faculty development needs for transition to eight weeks, the asynchronous live-online, and as well as the front-loaded hybrid. We offered that this summer, and we had over 50 faculty members attend. So the table that you see on the slide illustrates that the preliminary results for our short-term seven-to-nine-week classes that were completed in the first half of this fall 2020 semester shows higher success rate in all modalities, including the online, on-year-time, asynchronous courses, as compared to fall 2019. This occurred despite having a higher significant number of students enrolled, three times more students were enrolled in on-year times in 2020 than in fall 2019. It would be remiss if we did not share that first-eight-week success tends to be higher than second-eight-week success, so we will need to monitor, but we are very encouraged by the good work of SEC faculty and staff, and how they've worked to transition to help support student success in the midst of this very trying period. And so that is what we have to share with you all from Scottsdale. So for the next college.
This is Paul Dale, president of the Paradise Valley Community College, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, colleagues. It is my pleasure to introduce the work being done at Paradise Valley Community College in the context of enrollment management leading to student success. Typically, we look at enrollment management from the context of at least three domains. First, access recruitment, primarily what Provost Fisher talked about, course delivery strategies and schedules modalities, is what Scottsdale just talked about. And for me, perhaps the most important is the retention and persistence of our current students, inclusive of exemplary teaching and learning. This evening, Dr. Janice Schwartz, vice president of Student Affairs, will review Paradise Valley Community College's work on the retention front, integrated efforts between academic and student affairs nested in our fields of interest as part of our Guided Pathways program. With that, I'll introduce Dr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Dr. Dale. Thank you, and good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC, and guests. It is a pleasure to share with you our retention effort at Paradise Valley Community College. We really focused on the proactive intrusive student support, and so sometimes that word intrusive, it gets people, it doesn't sound as positive as we hope it to be. We knew that our students were in a virtual environment, and we were going to get, need to get to where they are at, to really be effective at retaining them and helping them with their success goals, as Dr. Dale stated. We also really believed in the power of relationships, in the power of connection with our students to help them be successful, and so we decided that we really needed to focus on that in the fall. So we did, we really sat on the foundation of the Guided Pathways work that we had already started at Paradise Valley, and we were able to assign each of our students that were with us in the fall to an analyst, so that they had a specific contact at the college, someone that they knew was their person that they could reach out to and have a connection with. And each of those students received at least three contacts from their analyst during that fall semester, letting them know who they were. We also worked very hard, and Dr. Fisher shares this as well, about developing those academic advising plans, so that students were able to know what their plan was for spring semester, and make that plan for their academic success. And then we were able to create a virtual walk-in lobby, so even if students weren't able to get to an advisor, they knew that they could call in at any point, and we would help them get registered for that class. Right now, we're looking at about a 37% retention rate, which at this time last year puts us on track to have a higher retention rate fall to spring than we did last year. We expect that to go up significantly as we go into the spring semester, and we believe that our students know the classes that they're planning to take and have a plan for registration. Additionally, I'd also be remiss to not be completely thankful to our faculty at Paradise Valley, who also partnered with our student affairs analysts to really build those care teams for students. So we had counselors, faculty associated with each FOI, the advisors, math and English faculty, all working together to really case-manage our students and reach out to our students throughout the semester to let them know that we were supportive and here for them and helping them with their plan. Probably most exciting for us is we also decided over the summer and into the fall semester that we would like to pilot a peer leader program. We felt like that peer-to-peer, student-to-student contact would be the contact that our students valued and needed the most, as they weren't able to have their regular connections with students that they were used to having on campus. So we invested in hiring two to three peer leaders per FOI, and we assigned each of those peer leaders a caseload of students that they reached out to throughout the semester. And you can see, they've already had about 1,800 contacts with students, one-on-one, and those could be anything from helping them with registration to how do I talk to a faculty member, or how do I manage this online? And we're finding that students are telling us that they really value that ability to connect to a peer, to someone like them, because they're not always sure that they can talk with their faculty member, or who to reach out to in the administration. And so having that student that's there on their team has been really helpful. One of our students said that we're really trying to create a buddy system, and making sure that each student has a friend on campus, even if it's in a virtual environment, that can really allow them to be successful. So we think that we are on track to really have a strong retention effort as we move into the spring semester. Thank you so much. Dr. Dale, anything you would like to add?
No, thank you, Dr. Schwartz. And again, I just would want to reiterate my thanks to faculty and staff for their support of this program, and very excited to look at how our number's going to turn out in spring, and excited that we're folded right into the Guided Pathways and leveraging the Fields of Interest program. So with that, we'll turn it over to Phoenix College and my colleague, Dr. Larry Johnson.
Thank you so much, Dr. Dale. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Chancellor, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC, and guests. I am Larry Johnson. I serve as the president of the flagship of the Maricopa Community College, and it is certainly my pleasure to speak on something that has been exacerbated, we talk about the inequities that have occurred with our students, and that is the digital divide. I was recently on a conversation with the EAB, the Education Advisory Board, and bridging the digital divide has been one of the central conversations that is discussed, student participation in terms of retention and completion, and some of the data that was provided is such. Thirty-three million of U.S. adults are not connected to the internet. Eighteen percent of U.S. adults who make less than $30,000 annually are not connected to the internet, and there's a significant number of students who are impacted because of their locality. So one of the opportunities that Phoenix College has engaged in is how can we close the digital divide, not only for our students that are in our region, but how can we partner with other organizations, with the city of Phoenix that you'll learn more about, and Phoenix Union, to not only close the digital divide for our students, but how can we do more of a broad-based and systemic engagement of our local communities, so we can increase student success? So to talk more about that, I'm inviting our CIO, who is Paul Ross, to talk more about how we are engaging and how we hope to close the digital divide for many of our students, and hopes to also expand this project throughout the district. Paul?
Good evening, President Sullivan, governing board members, Chancellor, CEC, and guests. So my name is Paul Ross, I'm your CIO at Phoenix College, and the digital divide has been a topic of discussion and statistical analysis for quite some time. However, with the advent of COVID, and the world en masse just migrating overnight to virtual learning, remote work, and the need to distance ourselves, there's a clear awareness now across the community that access to the internet and appropriate tools is essential to maintain communications and to enable our students, A20, to continue to be engaged in education. We know this time has been turbulent for many people, with lots of challenges and opportunities forcing everybody to examine their use of technology and access to the internet. I'm going to provide to you now a couple of brief snapshots of what we've been doing at Phoenix College to address the digital divide, and how we've pivoted during these times. At PCC, to assist our students, among other colleges too, we implemented a laptop program for students. This last semester, we deployed 148 laptops, and with many students expressing that without the device, they would not have been able to complete their programs, and so that was a much-needed tool there. A second service that we deployed this semester is titled Close to Home. It's a remote-access third-party system that we worked to design and deploy to enable our students to access some of those specialist applications that currently are only available on campus, but now our students can access the buyer of web browser on a device, whether it's a Chromebook, or it's a PC, or it's a Mac, so that way they are able to access some of the specialized applications that otherwise would have been just available on campus. Now, two weeks ago, we even deployed Edge Rome across Phoenix College, working alongside the district ITS department. Edge Rome basically enables our students to access networks across the world that provide internet. So for instance, at locations that have Edge Rome enabled, our students can now access their Wi-Fi connections, such as ASU, NAU, and soon, Edge Rome will start to appear across our colleges, across Maricopa. We're also working in partnership with the city of Phoenix, the Arizona Commerce Authority, the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, the Phoenix Union High School District, and 12 elementary feeder school districts, to create a long-term solution that addresses the needs of the digital, of our students, to bridge the digital divide, trying to come up with innovative solutions using a range of technologies. Next slide. Our efforts include examining data. There's one data point on this slide I will just do a correction with, because it came from a different dataset, and that is, in Maricopa County, 4% or 38 of the census tracts out of 916 have households with rates below poverty of greater than 50%. But some of the data that we've been able to identify actually helps inform the conversation. So we've created this whole methodology around using very different data sources and geographic mapping. Part of this is also to measure out a proof-of-concept area, and we've got a four-square-mile proof-of-concept area that we're working to deploy in the Alleahambra and Cartwright School District area, working with the Phoenix City, the city of Phoenix.
It sounds as if we've lost our presenter, but I think you get the point with the data that's been presented, and I would just like to thank all of our colleges and college teams. Thank you very much for bringing your innovations forward to the board to talk about as we think about how we're adjusting to the situation that we're in, the enrollment situation as well. Next slide. As we look forward to fall 2021, we just wanted to give you some of the things that we're thinking about, don't need to spend time on them right now, but we want you to know that we are focused forward in the future. And with that, I think, the final slide, if you would, is what does it take to keep a student in school? I've mentioned a couple of times that our students are telling us, it's not the cost of college, it's the cost of life, it's the difficulty that they have getting their basic needs met. And so we're forming partnerships, we have one with DES to help our students meet their basic needs, and we have a basic needs website that is linked in the presentation, so that you can take a look at that if you'd like. We've had about 3,400 students accessing that information. And our NCCD Foundation is launching a basic needs appeal starting December 10th, so watch for that. Next slide. And finally, we're getting to the board discussion, and the next slide. And with that, Dr. Sullivan, may I turn the presentation back to you, or how would you like to proceed?
Sure. Thank you very much, and thank you to all the presenters. Lots of good and interesting information. I like the word innovation, and certainly interested in, again, how we're going to have some leading indicators on these, as opposed to just lagging, so keep up the work that will help identify those. We can do a couple of things. I see that you have some questions for us as board members, and perhaps before we weep into those, I need to circle back to board members to see if they have any key questions on what has already been presented, if that will work for you, Ms. Dr. Fisher. Absolutely. Okay. And then when we come back to the questions, for example, how can board members support positive legislative policy changes? I guess my question would be what possible policy changes are on the horizon, or what are you thinking that we might be able to support? But let's go back to board members for any key questions, and then we'll surface these other comments, recognizing that we probably have another 20 minutes for conversation this evening on this topic, before we could resume again in the, going forward, another conversation on enrollment as we progress along. So I will start. Mrs. McGrath, do you have key questions?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Narini?
Not so much questions as comments, and yeah, I agree that one of the biggest things that I think was just kind of mentioned, but we won't see the impact until later, is getting those award letters out early. That is such a huge issue for our students, as they're competing with the universities who are getting the letters out right away, getting their, if not the letters, at least scholarships out right away. So having the students have the award letters early, so they can start making those decisions, I think is going to make a huge impact on our students. And I know that Dr. Fisher had mentioned the dual enrollment numbers are up, and I'm sad that Dr. Johnson didn't bring up the dual enrollment that Phoenix College is doing with Phoenix Union and the enrollment, and not just the Phoenix College, but Dr. Brock and Jesus Chaddis, and the work that they're doing to get the dual enrollment up and running. But I know that at Phoenix College, Gina Ruiz and Shana Mitchell and Dr. Cruzi have been doing a remarkable job trying to get the dual enrollment going, so that we do get that guided pathway, so that guided pathway from high school to the colleges. And I think if we can start maximizing that and following up with those students, as well as with ACE and some of the other early outreach, early college programs, I think we can make huge strides forward with that. And again, with the peer-to-peer leaders working and getting the one-on-one attention, I just know that this year, with just the students that I work with, and it's not just the students, it's the counselors and the teachers as well, this impact, I'm sure we all are aware, but just the air is out of the balloon with so many of our students and so many of our staff at the high school level, to even keep the students motivated through to the process, the college process and the application process. So I think the team is doing a great job with what they have to work with, and I appreciate all their help and appreciate all the work that they're putting into it, because they're fighting a huge, huge... because they're, they're fighting a, a huge, huge battle keeping the enrollment to, to where, to where it needs to be. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sarr.
Just a couple. Do we have data that we can share that shows a difference in enrollment for occupational programs compared to the general education programs? Is there a significant difference in how one is doing over the other?
Ms. Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, we do have data dashboards specifically to the programs. I don't have that in front of me at the moment, but we can certainly follow up.
I'm just curious. I, you know, I'm in the occupational world these days at the high school level. And there's a lot of competition out there for those students. It's not just the, the community college and the college and universities. There's everything from places like Galvanize. And then, of course, the online programs that you can get for free in most cases that give you the credentials that companies are looking for. So I'm curious to see if we're seeing any kind of a movement in the, in those occupational programs that's different than the transfer programs. So that's really my question.
We will certainly follow up with you and with the rest of the board.
Mr. Sarr, were you making other comments? It was hard for me to tell.
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Sarr.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I also primarily just want to make comments. First, I really want to thank everyone who participated in putting this presentation together. I will confess that I expected to be totally depressed by this presentation, knowing how significantly enrollment is down. Instead, I am absolutely delighted with the innovation that is occurring around this horrible pandemic that we're experiencing. And it leads me to hope that post-COVID, that we'll still spend some time reflecting on really what we learned from how to serve students during the pandemic. You know, to talk specifically about the eight-week courses, I'm not surprised at all at how successful that's being for Scottsdale. We know that the for-profits in particular use shorter-term and specifically eight-week courses all the time in order to speed up completion of programs and also to allow students to focus just on one or two classes rather than four or five classes at a time. So I really hope that that is something Scottsdale choose to continue and that the other colleges will look at as well. I do have to express some frustration that students are still telling us that they don't know what our plans are for reopening or for offering courses. Because I know the marketing department and student services have worked really, really hard. And the board provided some extra funds to try to help with that. So that's just, continues to be frustrating that we can't, we're, we're trying to get the word out, but obviously not succeeding in all of students paying attention to the efforts that we're making. So at any rate, good job. I am really delighted with what I heard today.
Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Dr. Thor, the data about students thinking that they couldn't find the information they needed about us reopening, about our modalities, really that was data from students that were in a, in a text survey that did not come to school in the fall. So we hope that we have made great inroads on our communication. We're certainly working at it, as you said. And thank you for your kind words.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Nguyen?
Thank you. I really appreciated the presentation and I was struck by the minority students. So I, that have not engaged or are not engaging in our college system. And so clearly, a twenty-four percent for Native Americans. And I look at Scottsdale College with their shorter classes. I, I would hope that we could engage and, and maybe try a pilot there and impact both of those metrics. The other thing that I was struck by, and I think we're, we're seeing this, is with our state colleges, being on campus really does make a difference. So I am hopeful as we go into this next semester with the sports and some of the other things that we're bringing back that will also help increase our enrollment. I was also encouraged by the numbers I saw here that we are starting to see a trend, like we're, we're moving towards the, the metrics that we want. So the reduction, I think it was from twenty-three to fifteen percent in terms of we're still off, but we're headed in the right direction. I think the more certainty that we can provide in the community, the better off. And to Dr. Thor's point, using the money that we have given to maybe promote and advertise we're open, we're in-person whenever we can do that and, and we're ready to do that. And finally, I'll bring it up tonight at the board meeting, but I, I think that there is an opportunity. I think all three colleges that presented tonight do a good job of this. But really, meeting with our business leaders in the community and figuring out where are the jobs? And if we're doing short classes to get people certificates to get back out into the workforce, how do we encourage people, use our community college system to get a job afterwards? Or to, to be in the workforce sooner, since we have people that are really struggling and a lot of first-time college students. So I'd like to see us, you know, acknowledge all the work the teachers are doing and all the work that the colleges are doing and maybe take it off-campus and see what we can do to work inside our governments and inside our business community to have them support our community college and, and really make that gap up that we're down. I think with fourteen percent higher population growth, that we have a real opportunity to bring our numbers back to where we were and then exceed them. So I thank you for the presentation and thank you.
Thank you. So, so Dr. Fisher, thank you again for you and the team and the representatives from the colleges. This is, this is very good information. It reinforces the practice that each campus is engaging in their partners in doing this work, some of the challenging thinking that's going into creating solutions, not just reacting to crises. And, and I think that a lot of this was predicated certainly by a health dilemma crises. But was we seeking the responses and answers to address that? There are a lot of activities that I see that are being engaged in that will translate and transfer into longer-term experiences and longer-term opportunities for the district. There are a couple of things that struck me before we begin to, just commenting. One of the pieces was I was struck by how many felt prepared, didn't feel prepared to take classes online. And, and then I looked at the correlate, largest decline by age group is among younger students. And I have to tell you, I was a little bit surprised by that, thinking younger people are online often. And then, of course, we have the digital divide where often they're not. So I mean, this is a, a circle that goes round and round. But that, that struck me and I'm always wondering sometimes are there other ways to, to work with potential students perhaps? And how do you take classes online or what's the difference in the protocol? And just as a curiosity, I, I just found that interesting with the correlate. And the other thing, I was struck by how many people over the age of twenty-five are still staying enrolled with the drop in, by only seven percent versus the younger. So for me, those were things that I would want to explore even deeper. But I like the relationship to the workforce development piece. And I think the partnerships that are being developed out of that department are excellent. And certainly, working with AZ Works and others will, will support some of that information around tracking jobs. So staying integrated with that department is, is good. When it came to the digital divide, I was thinking, what exactly are we doing? What is the financial framework for that? Is the expense of this focused into the individual college? Is this something that's being translated to all the district? So there is some curiosities there. But you put three comments on how can the board help? And given our timeframe, I probably we can't get into that. But those are certainly elements for the board to consider as we move into the next year. And the first one would suggest that we need to have a sense of what legislative policy opportunities or changes exist. So as we're looking at the legislative agenda, we can know how we could lend our support or guidance there. And how can we promote new programs and enrollment through our own networks? Certainly, we all have outreach to businesses and groups, community groups with parents, with kids. And I think some guidance on that going forward could be helpful. So we're not getting in your way with our comments or questions, but instead being supportive of the efforts that are being put forward by your department and this team and, and the individual colleges. So I'm wondering if as we move into next year, heaven forbid, calendar year, that maybe some of that can be framed out. So again, the board can equally, can be an equitable partner with, with you and in the district in these as opposed to just being someone who listens and reacts to the up or down of enrollment. So those, those are my comments and I don't know if you have any comment in return.
Ms. Sullivan and all board members, thank you so much for all of your comments. We highlighted three particular colleges this evening. Please understand that's because of time. I could have highlighted something special that was happening at every single college. All of our faculty and staff are working very hard on enrollment. And Ms. Sullivan, specifically to your comments, Alexis Sestorff and, who is our Government Relations Director, and of course, Darcy Renfro, will be bringing forward more about the legislative agenda for the coming year. And so just know, board members, that you will be seeing more of that. And I, I really appreciate your comments, Ms. Sullivan, about working in partnership to promote new programs and enrollments. And we can certainly provide more information on that as we move into the next year and we see more of those programs coming online. But generally, just thank you so much for the time to, to present to you and to spend with you. And I will turn it back over to our chancellor, Dr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher.
President Sullivan, you know, again, on behalf of Maricopa employees, thank you again. And we hope that this has been helpful and we, we'll continue to work on this. We're throwing everything that we have at it and we're going to continue to do that. And we'll stand ready to provide you with any updates anytime the board wishes to have one.
Thank you. I, I mean, obviously, this is something that's of curiosity and interest by all board members. I don't think we've been to a meeting without the world's enrollment and where are we? Or the word in the question don't, don't come up. So moving forward, I would expect that will continue to be something. And, you know, I always appreciate, given this is Mr. Sarr's essentially last work session with us in a formal way, the interest and the comments he makes always about the occupational elements and the credit hours and the way we track all of that. So, Mr. Sarr, we, we hope not to lose the interest that you present. And maybe some of us will be able to pick up the mantle and continue to assure that we never lose sight of those comments. So with that, it's six oh four according to my clock and we have a board meeting scheduled for six thirty. So, so folks, I'm going to, particularly board members, don't go away. Put yourselves on mute and at about six, you know, twenty-five, we'll, we'll start gathering again for our six-thirty meeting. But again, last, thank you very much for the attention to this issue and the work you're doing on. Thank you for putting together this presentation for us this evening. So with that, the work session is concluded and we will reconvene at six-thirty. Thank you.